Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with a loading and mortgage premium, Montic, Colorado. The acronym is NPAC, I am the Consular Judge of Consular Court. Today is class number 25. Today is a special day. Now we're going to get into our 25th class, understanding that number 25 is a divine number. Two plus five is seven. So those Moors out there, we want to thank you for watching all 25 of our classes. If you haven't watched all 25 classes, that's okay. If you have some time, go back and watch them. We want to thank you for doing that. We also want to thank you, if in fact you've taken the time to subscribe, but if you haven't subscribed, please take the time to subscribe, like and share. The same way NPAC subscribes and likes and shares with you about international law. So what Moors are doing right now around the nation, as Moors start to reach out to NPAC, we're starting to learn more about the fact that Moors are starting to truly understand the power of statehood and that Moors don't only want to be stateless Moors. They want to learn about state governments because we're recognizing the power of what? The pen. The power of the pen. So today we'll continuously talk about the power of the pen. Who controls the power of the pen? The matriarchs, the mothers, on behalf of Mother Earth. Both Mother Earth and the matriarchs coming together. That's your two X chromosomes coming together, your two X chromosomes coming together. So today we're learning a little bit more about how the matriarchs need to come back into the power of the pen and denounce and renounce the Roman, rogue man, rogue man called the Roman, i.e. the colonists. We'll continue to learn about that today. Alright, so today being class 25. What did we learn in class 24? We learned a lot more about international law. We learned about a website where the International Court of Justice, where you can study international law, where they have videos, they have literature, etc. They literally have study classes through that website that you can sign up for. So I encourage Moors to continue to keep studying international law. Why? It is the only remedy to get our sovereignty back through our state governments. So we have no choice but to study international law. What is international law? Treaties. Treaties represent us from a political perspective, but treaty is a political document. But really, what is the foundation to everything we do? It's about consanguinity. It's about your bloodline. It's about your birth rights. And the only way to get your birth rights back, you must know how to use a pen. We'll learn about this pen some more today. We're going to learn exactly what the colonists know about you, that they tell you through their secret societies and they tell you through a series of movies, etc. Alright? So, as we typically open up, let's start off with our mission and vision. What's the mission and vision statement? To create the United States of Morocco. But as we learned in video number 24, we started understanding what? It's going to require discipline. Discipline. Discipline determines our destination. And what's the destination? So, sooner or later, create the United States of Morocco again. Why do I say again? Because Moors already had government before the colonists ever came out of Iberian Peninsula in 1492. Alright, so we're going to create the United States of Morocco again. Alright? Now in class 24, we started going over what I call the seven de jour writs from Consular Court, what I call the circle seven. This is what Moors must start to onboard through their Consular Court. These are documents, exhibits under what's called discovery. So your first document you send is your state of facts and judicial notice. Why is that important? You're putting the colonists on notice that you have created your state, that you're backing what's called an oppure persona through the state sovereignty according to international law, right? Then you've got your other six exhibits based upon your discovery documents. Exhibit A, your constitution. Exhibit B, your state seal. Exhibit C, your provincial state flag. Exhibit D, your empire of Morocco flag. This is a very important word right here, Moors, empire. Don't let the colonists try to bait you into saying, "You mean kingdom of Morocco?" No, empire Morocco. We learned that through the ICJ report, France versus the United States of America. It's about the empire, not the kingdom, keep in mind. The Kingdom of Morocco, who claimed independence in 1956, came out their constitution in 1962 claiming to be Kingdom of Morocco. What does that mean? The Kingdom of Morocco is a state provincial government within the Moroccan Empire. That must be known. Alright? So the Moroccan Empire is vast. So Moors need to create their state provincial governments within the Moroccan Empire. Obviously, number six, exhibit E, allegiance and oath statement. That is their brick and mortar. This is the mortar, mortar that glues all this together. The allegiance and oath to all of this, okay? Then finally, your exhibit F, public inauguration video, putting it on the record for the world to be a witness, as well as you inviting your friends and family members to witness your inauguration. Alright? I'll call it the seven de jour writs from Consular Court, circle seven documents. This is just the basic template. You can always have more. You can have 10 documents if you want. This is the basics of what Moors need to put on the record to the colonists, which are what you call third states, their municipal corporations. Never forget that. Alright? So today, I have a little treat for you. We're going to watch about a minute and 54 seconds of The Wizard of Oz, right? The last part of it, where Dorothy is now making a demand, she wants to go home. And then all of a sudden now, we find out who the wizard really is. All of us remember how the story goes. So this is the end part, when she finally brings the broom, because the Wizard of Oz told her to go and kill the other witch, come back to the broom because he needed the broom. Then he promised that he would now tell her how she can go home. We're going to learn a little bit more about that today. Alright? But before we read, I'm sure I said, should I say, before we watch the video on The Wizard of Oz, only a minute and 54 seconds of, alright, the telling of it, I want to go over a few words, okay? In the movie, you can't really see it, but Toto, the dog, is right here, okay? So what do you have? You have Dorothy, matriarch. You understand, the colonists is talking to the Moors, talking about the Moors, because they like to boast and brag. They also, because of their arrogance, want to see if the Moors are catched, but they call signs and symbols through their movies. So you got Dorothy, who's a matriarch in this movie, okay? Don't worry about complexion. These are just characters. This is what you call an anthropomorphic story. Dorothy being a matriarch. And who does she have with her? One, two, three. And then, then you got the dog, next four. It's a total of five people, five. Okay, talking to five principles, okay? You also got to recognize all the green is going on, the emerald green, that's Venus, right? That's the color of our flag, red and green, right? So Dorothy in this movie has on red ruby slippers. You got the Venus green all around her, signs and symbols, Venus, okay? Which represents the Moors, the one, the matriarch, okay? But in the original story, it was written where Dorothy would have on silver slippers. Okay, silver represents what? The owl chemical of what? The moon, right? Silver, moon, silver, okay, alchemical. But in the movie, she had on red slippers, alright? So, remember, this is five people, okay? That's your five, alright, your five principles. So what we're going to do is, we're going to learn a little bit more about what does this mean initially? We're going to look up some words in the Black Law Dictionary and understand what are the colonists trying to tell you through this anthropomorphic story? We're studying law right now. We're studying international law, okay? Keep in mind, Dorothy thinks she's in someone else's jurisdiction. And you got the Wizard of Oz claiming that it's his jurisdiction and he controls the law. The law of man. Okay, remember that, alright? So Dorothy has what in her arms all the time? A dog. Her dog, Toto, right? So we're talking dog. Remember in the movie, the dog pulls the curtain back on Wizard of Oz initially, right? When we watch the video, it's going to make sense to you, but I want us to go through these words first and when we watch the video, you're going to see the signs and symbols very quickly, okay? So the Black Law Dictionary, fourth edition, we're going to read the definition of dogma. So if I have mother read dogma, please?
Dogma, in the civil law, a word occasionally used as descriptive of an ordinance of the Senate.
Stop. Okay, short definition, but it says a lot. Dogma, in the civil law. So they're telling you immediately, what do you do? Now you need to go look up civil law. That's not Moors must study. It's giving you what? A point of reference, follow the yellow brick road. But then it goes on to say what? A word, a word occasionally used as descriptive of an ordinance of the Senate. What's an ordinance of the Senate? What's a Senate? The Senate and most governments of the United States of America, when you're talking about English law, they have a Senate. What does the Senate do? It oversees the law. It also picks the judiciary cabinet for the judges. So the United States of America, not confuse the United States, through their Senate picks the judiciary branch, the judges for the Supreme Court, etc., right? Which now starts between the Senate, which is your House of Representatives, the Senate and executive branch puts together legislation, and the Senate picks the judge to oversee said legislation in the Constitution. So what are they saying right now already? In the civil law, a word occasionally used as descriptive of an ordinance of the Senate. So civil law is governed by the Senate. House of Representatives and executive branch put together law, okay? But they're telling you already something, already immediately, the Senate ordinance. They're not talking about common law. The Senate, okay? So let's learn about civil law. So if I want to read civil law?
Civil law. Roman law and Roman civil law are convertible phrases, meaning the same system of jurisprudence. That rule of action which every particular nation, commonwealth, or city has established...
Acutely.
Peculiarly, for itself, more properly called municipal law, to distinguish it from the law of nature and from international law.
Stop. So what did we learn about civil law already? Civil law, so civil law, civil law is Roman law. That's turned civil law, civil law is not a bad word. But under Roman law, it's been turned into a negative word. We'll learn about that. So civil law, civil law, Roman law, and Roman civil law are convertible phrases, meaning the same system of jurisprudence. We'll learn about jurisprudence in a little while, okay? But they're getting their Roman law from jurisprudence, okay? That rule of action which every particular nation, commonwealth, or city has established peculiarity for itself, more properly called municipal law, to distinguish it from the law of nature. So civil law under what's called Roman law, Roman law is distinguished from law of nature. Roman law is distinguished from what? From international law. So immediately we're learning on the dogma. Dogma distinguished from international law and the law of nature. So who's the law of nature? Mother. Mother Earth. The Empire State is what you call feudal law, colored law. So what are we studying right now? We're studying about common law, which is mother, Mother Earth, the matriarchs, versus colored law. What's colored law? Roman law. Rogue man, man made law, patriarch law. Dorothy represents the matriarch. Wizard of Oz, the wizard represents patriarch. So you got the matriarch and the patriarch. The patriarch is distinguished from international law and the law of nature, which is mother's law. All natural law comes from mothers. Mothers write the first law because they give birth, that is B law. You created, which makes you now the owner of that intellectual property, which is your child. You created the law, okay? So as we continue on. Common law. Keep in mind, common law versus colored law. What does color mean? Color means to conceal. So if we spell it, C-O-L-O-U-R, French word, color, French word, means to conceal, to hide, right? Color a law, hiding the real law from who? The matriarchs. If you hide the law from the matriarchs, then the matriarchs cannot teach themselves, much less teach their sons and daughters. Because color is hiding the real law. We'll learn about that in the movie of The Wizard of Oz. So if I can have a mother read common law, what is common law about? Mothers, matriarch, patriarchal system versus what? Patriarchal system, which is the wizard.
Common law, as distinguished from the Roman law, the modern civil law, the canon law, and other systems, the common law is that body of law and juristic theory which...
Was.
Oh, was originated, developed, and formulated, and is...
Administered.
Administered in England, and has obtained among most of the states... Oh, most of the states and people of Anglo-Saxon.
Anglo-Saxon.
Okay, so what have we learned thus far already from common law? It's distinguished from Roman law. So the mother law is distinguished from the patriarch law, alright? So Moors are being ruled right now by the rogue man, rogue man law. That's doing what? Concealing mother's law, nature's law. Follow me so far? The modern civil law, the canon law, and other systems, the common law is that body of law and juristic theory which was originated, and developed, and formulated, and is administered in England, and has obtained among most of the states and peoples of Anglo-Saxon stock. So what's happening? Common law is distinguished from Roman law. Common law is distinguished from what? Modern civil law. Common law, mother's law, is distinguished from canon law because canon law is what? Ecclesiastical, patriarchy law. Canon law is for male-dominated popes. You must understand, because of the Pope's decrees and doctrines, doctrine of discovery, unum sanctum policies, etc., the pope, who wears a dress with pants underneath the dress, is pretending to be mother. So he's combining common law and colored law because he's concealing something. He's concealing what? Mother's law. But he's pretending to be both a duality of law, okay? Because all law comes from the mother, as we'll learn. All legal jurisdictions, i.e. statutes of de facto states, still come from jurisprudence, common law, but they're related. So you got the de facto law is related to de jure law. There's a watered-down negative version of law. Versus the positive law of jurisprudence, common law, matriarch's law, nature's law. That's why the women, the matriarchs, must control the pen in order to get back in the proper balance of law, it must start with common law. Anything done in colored law, i.e. Roman law, is negative law and it cannot sustain itself. Jurisprudence. Let's learn about jurisprudence. What is jurisprudence? Consanguinity. Your birthright based upon your bloodline, jurisprudence, alright? Remember, juris means what? In law. The norms of positive law, that's juris, okay? So if we're reading this, we're reading about mother's law that's going to be intermixed with negative law. Because the popes and the colonists always intermix common law and colored law, but you have to be to make the distinction, delineation of both what you're reading. We'll break it down. Okay, how does mother read jurisprudence?
Jurisprudence, the philosophy of law are the science which treats of the principles of positive law and legal relations. The term is wrongly applied to actual systems of law, to current views of law, or to suggestions for its amendment, but is the name of a science. The science is a formal or analytical rather than a material one. It was wrongly divided into general and particular, or into...
Philosophical.
Philosophical and historical. It may therefore be defined as the formal science of positive law.
Alright, so what did we learn about jurisprudence already?
I'm just joking.
Alright, alright, what did we learn about jurisprudence thus far? We've already learned it's about positive law. So if we're talking jurisprudence, we're talking common law, we're talking mothers. Mothers is positive. Roman law is negative law, under the guise of what they call civil law. Civil law is not a bad word. It's a word injustice, but it's used as a negative way through a Roman law. Versus common law are dealing with civil matters. Civil matters, civil law should be used in a positive way about mother's law, nature's law, based upon international law using treaties. But the Roman law uses it under their statutes, ordinance, codes, policies, etc., negative law through their municipal de facto corporations that's only in it for profit and not for the people, alright? So watch this. Jurisprudence, meaning mother's law. The philosophy of law, or the science which treats of the principals, not prince of pals, principles, principles is what? Mothers. Prince of pals is what? Roman law, patriarchy law. P-A-L, pal, that's male. Principals, mother, okay? A positive law. Watch this. This is how they intermix it. And legal relations. I'm going to read it again. Got to catch this, Moors. It's how Moors must read. You must use discernment. You got to break it down. The philosophy of law, or the science, who's the science? Who's the scientist? Mothers. You create life. You turn your estrogen into what? Testosterone, create a son, X-Y chromosome is what you give birth to. Mother only has a two X chromosome. She gives birth to an X-Y chromosome son. You're a scientist. You're an owl chemist. Owl, the owls. A-L, alchemical, alchemist. You're the owl. You must understand, you're the almighty, knowing owl, O-W-L. Owls are wise. The wise bird, that's you. You're the owl, A-L, the owl, the lodeo. There's no sovereign above a woman, the matriarch, which means there's no sovereign above your opinion of legislation. But watch what the Roman law does. Look what he did. He attached himself to you. Legal relations to what? Positive law. What is he saying there? Shadow government. He's an impostor. Pretending that he's maintaining common law, but it's really colored law because it's concealed as legal relations. It's related to positive law, but it's negative. Let's continue. The term is wrongly applied to actual systems of law. So if the term is being wrongly applied, what does that mean? It's wrongly applied through colored law, positively applied to common law, or to the current views of law, or to suggestions for its amendment. But it is the name of a science. This science is formal or analytical rather than a material one. It is the science of actual, what is science? Science is what? Sign, 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 nine, sign, nine, nine. Nine is what? Nine months until you do what? To born day of your child. It's a circle. Nine months, sign, sign, nine, number nine, nine, sign. Circle. Nine months to give birth. Start here. This science is formal or analytical rather than a material one. It is science of actual or positive law. So it's telling you once again, it's positive law. It is wrongly divided into general and particular, or to philosophical, philosophical, excuse me, and historical. It may therefore be defined as the former science, the formal science of positive law. Continue, mother.
In the proper sense of the word jurisprudence is the science of law, namely that science which has for its function to ascertain... Ascertain. The principles on which legal rules are based, so as not only to classify those rules in their proper order and to show the relation in which they stand to one another, but also to settle the manner in which new or doubtful cases should be brought under the appropriate rules. Jurisprudence is more a formal than a material science. It has no direct concern with questions of moral or political policies for they fall under the province of ethics and legislations. But when a new or doubtful case arises to which two different rules seem, when taken literally to be equally applicable, it may be and often is the function of jurisprudence. To consider the ultimate effect which would be produced in each rule were applied to an indefinite number of similar cases to choose that rule which, when so applied, will produce the greatest advantage to the community.
Stop. Thank you, mother. Alright, what did we just read? Let's use some discernment. In the proper sense of the word jurisprudence is the science of law. Mainly that science which has for its function to ascertain the principles on which legal rules are based, so as not only to classify those rules in their proper order... Let's read it again. To classify those rules in their proper order, to classify those rules in their proper order. What are we learning right there? Jurisprudence comes first. What's your jurisprudence? Your birthright, your consanguinity, your nationality comes before any other legislation. All legislation is political in nature. But your bloodline is not political. It is your birthright, enabled right, unalienable right. That is the nature's law, woman, mother. Soon as you come out the womb, you immediately come into rights as people. However, the colonists has created a condition called Christian black codes. Christian black codes is a doctrine, which is illegal, says that the child comes out in the condition of the mother. So if the mother's a slave, the child comes out a slave. If the mother's black, the child comes out black. If the mother's a Moor, comes out a Moor. Wait a minute. The child comes out a Moor, no matter what, nationality is nationality. You take a German shepherd from Germany, place it in the United States of America jurisdiction. Is it still a German shepherd? Or is it a United States of America shepherd? It's still a German shepherd. You take that same German shepherd over to China. Is it a Chinese shepherd all of a sudden? Or is it still a German shepherd? Nationality is nationality. That's nature's law. A German shepherd is a German shepherd no matter where it is, on planet Earth. So you must understand, under Roman law, colored law, they are now hiding your nationality because now they're concealing mother's law, nature's law, common law, positive law. What are they replacing it with? Negative law. So therefore, when they talk about what? To classify those rules in their proper order, what order comes first? Nationality. Then you start talking about your political status of the each state and the state, political statuses. In law, the first rule of law is status. Status does what? It creates your capacities and incapacities based upon what? What? Then you get into political laws. But your nationality is your nationality. You're entitled to that. After that, you got to set up government, politics, alright? Alright? Positive politics. Based upon you being de jure versus de facto. Let's continue. And to show the relations in which they stand to one another. So what are we doing? We're showing treaties versus what? United States of America de facto state statutes. We're comparing the two. But they're gonna tell you now, when there's a dispute between treaties and nationality versus de facto state corporation statutes. What do you do next? What comes first? You gotta put it back in order. Watch what they tell you. But also to settle the manner in which new or doubtful cases should be brought under the appropriate rules. What's the appropriate rules? Counsel court for moors. They don't want you to know about your common law, counsel court rules. Because that would be the proper order. So they drag you into colored law for their what? Municipal corporation, what they call courts. Jurisprudence is more of a formal than a material science. It has no direct concern with questions of moral or political policy. For they fall under the province of ethics and legislation. But when a new or doubtful case arises to which two different rules seem. When taken literally to be equally applicable. It may be and often is the function of jurisprudence to consider the ultimate effect which would be produced if each rule were applied. That rule which, when so applied, will produce the greatest advantage to the community. What does that mean? If you always go back to common law, you can't go wrong. But the Roman law, i.e. the colonists, have been using colored law to keep people from getting back to the positive law. So they've been enforcing negative laws on the people. To keep you back to getting into order. So when I hear, when you hear me say, moors must get back into proper consensual order. Consensual order, what does that mean? We must consent. It must be consensual that we get back to common law. We must consent, that's Article fifteen of treaty of Madrid. You must consent to what? Moroccan law, common law, mothers' law, positive law. Where do you get that from? That's jurisprudence versus Roman law. That's positive law versus negative law. That's moors state law versus stateless moors. Legalities under Roman law. We're talking what? International law versus state statutes. Everything over here is common law, positive. Everything over here is colored law. Moors have to choose what status they want. Moors must understand, if you want to now maintain your sovereignty of your consanguinity, you have to get back to where you started. What's the orders of your origin? Look at your belly button and ask the question. Your mother. So when you keep going back to the Roman for permission to do something, you're out of order. Moors have to get back to jurisprudence of positive law. Dealing with their mother, the common law, the common sense. Dealing with your mother, understanding your birthright came from your belly button, your navel. Get back to mother. Get back in order. Alright? Let's continue. Now like I said, we're gonna look at a one minute and fifty-four second video of Wizard of Oz. But what's the definition of wizard? Have we ever asked ourselves that question? I looked up definition of wizard in the Merriam-Webster's dictionary. Mother, if you can read this, please?
Wizard noun, definition of wizard, entry one of two. One, one skilled in magic, sorcerer. Two, a very clever or skillful person, computer wizards. Three, archaic, a wise man, sage.
Alright, so what did we learn so far? Well, we're gonna look at two definitions of wizards because it's one of two in Merriam-Webster's. But a wizard is one skilled in magic. What did Toshley Bayte teach us? That judges were magicians. Right? That they're studying in the sciences, that they were all priests. What do priests use? Words. One skilled in magic, what is magic? Magic is to do what? Distract you. That way, one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing. It's all about distractions to pull off their magic trick. They conceal, colored law, conceal how they do the trick. You think it's magic. The reality is, they just fooled you. A very clever or skilled person, computer wizard. Archaic, a wise man. Okay, let's go to the second definition. Mother?
I'm sorry. Uh, wizard adjective. Definition of wizard, entry two of two. One, chiefly British, worthy of the highest praise, excellent. Two, archaic, having magical influence or power. Three, archaic, of or relating to wizardry, enchanted.
Okay. You can't make this stuff up. This is in Merriam-Webster's dictionary. Says a wizard is chiefly British. Who's chiefly British? The colonists. Thirteen colonists were what? British colonies. See, they're already telling you in the Wizard of Oz, who's the wizard? The colonists were chiefly British. Can't make this stuff up. They telling themselves, they both in brag about their accomplishments. Their arrogance tell you, the wizard is the British. Okay? But it's worthy of the highest praise, archaic, having magical influence or power. What power are they talking about? Words. Let's study that right now. Wizard. Must understand, wizard is a compound word. What's the compound word? Wise art. Wise word. Wise words. And words put together create a sentence. Wise words. Words create what? Sentences. Right? So sentences is what? Who uses sentences to put you in jail? So-called judges. De facto judges, a municipal corporation judges, use a sentence to sentence you to what? Fines, penalties, or confiscation. What's the confiscation? Imprisonment. They confiscate your body and lock you away. They're using words that create sentences and those sentences create your sentence or penalty. Because you didn't understand the counterintelligence of what they're doing to you. Because they're using a pen. But they're using color of law, not common law. Because under color law, they got you listed as a crayon. They got themselves listed as a crayon. That's negative law, that's concealing the reality of people's nationality. That's what you call the Roman law, feudal law. They're feuding with the owl. The owls is the common law. Okay? So we're talking what? A wizard cast spells. Talking wizard law, cast spells. He's talking what? Spelling, the spelling of what? Words. We're gonna learn a little bit more about that. We just studied what? Talking wizard laws. Dogma, the dog, total. Then we started studying civil law. To understand civil law is connected to the Roman law and negative law. That's colored law. We started studying common law, which is mothers' law. Then we started studying jurisprudence, which is your birthright. Back to your mother. Because that's the original order. That's the chronological order. Everyone came from a belly button, i.e. a navel. Gotta get back to common law. So we're looking at the definition of wizard, chiefly British. So what do moors need to do? We gotta use counterintelligence by using a pen with our own words. To get back to our mothers' law, nature's law. Okay. Now we're gonna watch this one minute and fifty-four second video. We're gonna break it down. We might watch it two or three times to really get the gist of what the colonists put into this movie. To see if the moors will wait to see if they recognize silence ever. Alright, remember, it's a five people. Including the dog, five. The dog is a part of their circle. Okay? First, we're just gonna watch it, and then we're gonna come back and break it down.
We know what you told us. We brought you the broodstick of the wicked witch of the west. We melted her.
Oh, you liquidated her, eh? Very resourceful.
Yes, sir. So we'd like you to keep your promises to us, keep them, please, sir.
Not so fast, not so fast! I'll have to give the matter a little thought. Go away and come back tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, but I wanna go home now!
You've had plenty of time already.
Yeah! Do not arise the wrath of the great and powerful Oz! I said come back tomorrow!
If you are really great and powerful, you keep your promises.
Do you presume to criticize the great Oz? You unbreakable creatures, think yourselves lucky! And I'm giving you audience tomorrow instead of twenty years from now! Oh! The great Oz has spoken! Oh! Pay your attention to that man behind the curtain! The man Oz has spoken!
Who are you?
Oh, I, I am the great and powerful Wizard of Oz!
You are?
Yeah.
I don't believe you!
No, I'm afraid it's true, there's no other wizard except me. You humbo! Ye-yes, that's exactly so, I'm a humbo.
Oh, you're a very bad man!
Oh, no, my dear, I'm, I'm a very good man, I'm just a very bad wizard.
Alright.
Very resourceful.
Yes, sir. Please, sir.
So far, what have we learned? Well, we know we got five against the one, Wizard of Oz. We've already saw thus far that the dog went over and pulled back the curtain. Right? He pulled back the curtain on the dog, but the dog pulled the curtain back on the dog mug. The Roman law. The de facto law, that's color. Color means what? To conceal. He was concealed behind the curtain. He's inside the pool pit. Okay? He's creating what? A shadow government, a distraction because he's a wizard, but what? Notice Dorothy and them are looking this way. And the real Oz is over there in the corner to their left. But he's got them distracted because he's a wizard. He's using a magic trick. He's using counterintelligence on them and got them distracted. But the dog goes over and pulls back the curtain, that's the dogma. Moors have to pull back the curtain and expose the dogma. What is dogma? The civil law under Roman law, the rogue man, the rogue man. What rogue man is it? The columnist, i.e. calling himself the American. And out there wearing a fez in his secret societies. Okay? Gotta get back to the common law.
We know what you told us. We brought you the broodstick of the wicked witch of the west. We melted her.
Oh, you liquidated her, eh?
So what's happening? Remember in the movie, Wizard of Oz initially told Dorothy and them, I hope you get home, but you gotta go and perform a task. You know what that's called? Stall, deny, and defend. Keep in mind, if we're watching this, Oz never knew how to tell her to go home. The good witch came in the end and told her how to click her heel and go home. So keep in mind, Oz never told her how to get home. He never knew how to tell her to get home. What am I saying? The moors can't come to a columnist who's de facto on how to get home. How do we get home? We gotta come back to common law. What's the common law? Understanding jurisprudence of birthright. Get back to positive law. Creating the moors states and studying international law. We must do that. Nobu Druali said what? I gave you everything to save a nation. Take it. Save yourself. Nobu Druali said what? I'm gonna leave the Europeans here long enough to do what? Teach of government. And then you run government. You run it. So what's happening right now? Keep in mind, in the movie. Wizard of Oz could not tell Dorothy how to get home. Why? He didn't know how to get home. He was stuck in Oz. Creating stall, deny, defend tactics to maintain his false jurisdiction in someone else's land. Oz himself was the avian in this movie. Was in the so-called land of Wizard of Oz. He was in Oz. So what he says right here says what? Oh, you liquidated the other witch. Remember Dorothy says, we got the broom, he says, oh, you liquidated her. You gotta catch these salty words they're talking about. You must understand, the moors have an E state. The colonists have been living off our R E state and liquidating our E state. What does liquidation mean? They've taken our hard assets and liquidated into cash flow. Cash flow means liquidated. Goes from a hard asset to now a cash flow. They're liquidating, now they're living off of our virtues. They're living off of our common law that they're now using colored law to live off our E state. That's the liquidation of our E state. He says, oh, you liquidated the witch. Liquidation. They're liquidating our E state.
Very resourceful.
Yes, sir. So we'd like you to keep your promises to us, keep them, please, sir.
Not so fast.
Now Dorothy's asking Oz, I need you to keep your promise because I kept my promise. What promise? Treaty of peace and friendship is the promise. The treaty of peace and friendship is the promise under common law. You must understand, they're right now in a contract. Dorothy and the Wizard of Oz had a contract. She said, I fulfill my side of the contract, now it's your turn. She's talking contract or promise. What does Oz say?
Not so fast! I'll have to give the matter a little thought. Go away and come back tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Go away and come back tomorrow. What does that mean? Stall, deny, defend, why? He didn't have an answer. He's hiding. He's concealing himself through his fire and brimstone. Notice it's all green, the head is green. Talking about Venus, a five star. Emerald city. But he's hiding, using common law to his advantage because he's still using law on Dorothy because he's pretending to be who? The law of the land. But he's in a de facto status concealed color of law concealing the truth about his true identity. We're gonna learn about his identity here in a minute. So what's happening? Soon as Dorothy said, I kept my end of bargain. You need to maintain the treaty too. What does Oz say? Hold up. Come back tomorrow. That's what they do to the moors. We make our claim, and they say, they either ignore us or they send us on another goose chase to chase after some other distraction, a statue of the state. Or we get frustrated, walk away ourselves, become self-competing. They distract us. But watch how Dorothy deals with it. Why? She wants to go home. She got pain, she's tired of playing the game. When moors get tired of playing the game, here's what's gonna happen.
Oh, but I wanna go home now!
You've had plenty of time already.
Yeah! Do not arise the wrath of the great and powerful Oz!
She's telling verbatim, I want to go home, I kept my end of bargain. The rest of her crew comes forward, yeah! I wanna go home, you promised all of us something. What does Oz do? He gets pushed back. Rawr! Now all of a sudden, now it becomes tough. Paper tiger, distraction through what? This cloud of dust. This shadow government, that's an impostor. Both the de facto government, which is Oz and that big cloud of smoke and all that fire and brimstone. Fake, faking it. Hoping that they get distracted and walk away because he's speaking loud this tone. That's what happened to the moors, they submit their affidavits and their rits. The state now comes back. The state now comes back, gets a little bit more aggressive, or they don't say nothing at all. We get frustrated, either quit, or we get demoralized, because now they tell us, "You don't have jurisdiction." That's their way of saying, "You don't have jurisdiction." They just get loud in their paperwork with the pen. They're using counterintelligence, maintaining their concealment of colored law, feudal law, Roman law, rogue man law. Watch. So now you're gonna watch the dog, right? See how they're all shaking? But the dog gonna run over and pull back the curtain.
Oz, I said come back tomorrow.
If you are really great and powerful, you'll keep your promises.
Do you presume?
Catch what she said? If you're so great, why don't you keep your promise? All right, let's plug that into Moors. The United States of America is so great, why do they keep concealing the identity of Moors? If Moors are just Negro blacks and colors, then why do they keep concealing the identity, the nationality of Moors? The United States of America, not confused, the United States is so great and powerful. What is it about Moors that have to conceal our nationality? Because they know who the true landlord is, and the landlord is mother. Mother's law, nature's law, positive law. And if you put things in proper chronological order, it always goes back to mother. Their mother created all the political documents through her sons, but everything goes back to mother, like they say. Who's the true power behind the, uh, the throne? The queen, mother. Now, you see which direction she's looking? She's distracted. That's the magi. That's the trick. Smoke. You go to Vegas, see a magic show, get all that smoke, girl walking around, he's distracting you. Distracting them looking this way, and he's way over there. That's what's been happening to Moors. We've been distracted with what? Studying the Constitution for the United States of America and studying state statues, municipal codes, and ordinances of the city of the United States of America's de facto corporation. We've been distracted. We have been studying international law, because if we study international law, we already have the Moors' states. That's all right. Guess what? Once you know better, you do better, right? So we're talking what? Remedy. What's the remedy? Now she's gonna start talking remedy.
Do you presume to criticize the great Oz? You unranked little creatures, think yourselves lucky that I'm giving you audience tomorrow instead of twenty years from now? Oh, the great Oz has spoken. Oh, pay no attention to that man behind the curtain.
Pay no attention to that man behind the curtain. What's happening? See, when the Moors start putting together what? Their circle seven, they're your riches of freedom. We're going to put the United States of America corporations on notice. What's going to happen? They're either gonna ignore us initially, or they're eventually, they will respond back in kind. They're gonna say, "Pay no attention to that man behind the curtain." What does that mean? They're de facto. They don't want us to know they're de facto. Even when we expose them, when we pull back the dogma on them, they're still gonna pretend as if they are what? In charge from their common law, their Roman law, their feudal law, until the very last second. They'll pull the curtain back. You open it, they close it. You see? So the Moors start submitting their state of fact documents. Understand, it's still gonna be some jockeying going on. It's gonna be a jest going on, right? So they're gonna be jousting, et cetera, fighting back, because they don't wanna give up the jurisdiction. Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. What's happening? Look at them. They're no longer distracted. They're now looking in the right direction. What direction they're looking at? International law. They're now starting to expose this de facto impostor, because now they're looking in the right direction. They see the trick. They can't be fooled no more. Can't take advantage of their virtues no more. Now they're all as a collective, now looking in the right direction. And who's leading the pack? Matriarch.
The man Oz has spoken.
Who are you?
Oh, I, I.
Who are you? Listen, Moors. The parties must be known. When Moors ask the United States of America, or the United States, or there are several municipal corporation states, "Who are you? Are you United States of America Republic, according to the treaty? Or are you a municipal corporation, United States of America Service Corporation? Who are you? The parties must be known." In order for Moors to ask that question, we must be in appropriate persona through our Moors' state. Or else we can't ask that question if we're stateless Moors, because if we're stateless Moors, we're on the negative side of things under colored law. We're admitting the jurisdiction. That's about what? They're de facto status, which makes us de facto too. So once we come back into a de your mindset of Moors' state, using international law, we say, "Okay, we know we have appropriate persona, because we're gonna, we're representing our mothers." Okay, United States of America, who are you? You're gonna ask that question? Who are you? Looking him straight in his eyes now, instead of being distracted, looking elsewhere, going straight to the cause and effect. Keep in mind now, she wants to go home. She's tired of playing games. Moors are tired of playing games. But how are we ever gonna get home? We gotta follow Yellow Brick Road based upon Moors' states and international law. Let's continue. But before I do that, what do you see here? Clocks of destiny. This is your compass in your square here. They know the clocks of destiny, this time is running out for them. There's a light in there, shining on there. They already know the color's gonna be pulled back eventually on their dogma. They're telling already how they're gonna deal with it. Deny, stall, deny, defend, until we look them straight in their eyes with the truth, but we must be in appropriate persona.
I am the great and powerful Wizard of Oz.
She's looking him dead in the eyes, and he's still screaming into the mic. What did I tell you? They're imposters all the way to the end, even when they're fully exposed. So Moors need to maintain their discipline all the way through dealing with these people. They're gonna continuously hold their position, even though they know they're caught red-handed.
You are?
Yeah.
I don't believe you.
No, I'm afraid it's true.
Wizard's mother tells the Oz, "I don't believe you." So the United States of America says, "Yeah, we're the United States of America." Guess what Moors should tell him? "I don't believe you." Are you United States of America Republic? Or are you United States of America Corporation? Because Steve Mohammed allowed the United States of America Republic to stay. George Washington, when he created the United States of America through the New Constitution of seventeen eighty-eight, seventeen eighty-nine, that was the United States of America Republic, Article Four, Section Four, putting a guarantee in republican form of government. So when Dorothy says, "I don't believe you," prove it. Moors will make the United States of America columnists who are using Roman law, i.e. feudal law, to prove that they're a republic, for which it stands. They won't be able to do it. Why? Through their Acts of Congress eighteen sixty-one and eighteen seventy-one, they've already put on the record, they're a municipal corporation of the District of Columbia. But they're no longer a republic anymore, and they are bankrupt and insolvent. So you must understand, they've already put that on the record. But we must still ask the question, are you the republic? Or are you a corporation? Because the parties must be known.
There's no other wizard except me. You humpo! Ye- yes, ye- that's exactly so. I'm a humpo.
You're a very bad man.
You're a very bad man. What did she say? You've been negative. You haven't been positive. You're a bad man. You're a bad wizard. How does he answer the question? Watch.
No, my dear, I, I'm a very good man. I'm just a very bad wizard.
What does bad wizard mean? Listen, Moors. Wizard casts spells. Wise, er, compound word, wise word, wise words, sentences. What is he saying when he says, "I'm a good man. I'm a bad wizard"? He knows he's been dishonored. He knows he's using colored law as negative law. He knows he's been undermining the mother. He knows that he's been undermining jurisprudence, which is nationality and birthrights. He knows he's been doing that with the Roman law, i.e. feudal law. He knows about positive law, because remember, it said that under common law, jurisprudence, that they also have legal relations. He knows he's related to common law, because he's related to the mother. But at the same time, he's trying to maintain his rule under colored law. He knows Moors are entitled to create their state governments, but he's gonna try to still invent impediments to slow us down. He knows he can't stop us. He'll try to slow us down. He knows international law is gonna represent us, but what is he gonna do? He gonna try to maintain his state statutes. He gonna keep saying, "Yeah, I'm still a wizard," even though you're looking him straight in the eyes. She's gonna understand, even in the end, he knows he's working in a negative capacity. He knows clocks of destiny is catching up with him, righteous indigenous people. He knows that his time is up. You must understand, the columnists have always understood clocks of destiny, because we taught them science of jurisprudence. They understand clocks of destiny. The only thing they have left now is for Moors to capitulate and maintain either being Negro black and colored, or for Moors to continuously be stateless Moors who claim their nationality and have put together what? Moors' states. So... Let's watch it one more time.
Please, sir. We know what you told us. We brought you the broodstick of the wicked witch of the West. We melted her.
Ah, you liquidated her, eh? Very resourceful.
Yes, sir. So we'd like you to keep your promises to us, keep them, please, sir.
Not so fast, not so fast. I'll have to give the matter a little thought. Go away and come back tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, but I wanna go home now.
You've had plenty of time already.
Yeah. Do not arise the wrath of the great and powerful Oz. I said come back tomorrow.
If you are really great and powerful, you'll keep your promises.
Do you presume to criticize the great Oz? You unranked little creatures, think yourselves lucky that I'm giving you audience tomorrow instead of twenty years from now? Oh, the great Oz has spoken. Oh, pay no attention to that man behind the curtain. The man Oz has spoken.
Who are you?
Oh, I, I am the great and powerful Wizard of Oz.
You are?
Yeah.
I don't believe you.
No, I'm afraid it's true. There's no other wizard except me. You humpo! Ye- yes, ye- that's exactly so. I'm a humpo.
You're a very bad man.
Oh, no, my dear, I'm, I'm a very good man. I'm just a very bad wizard.
Okay. When he's telling Dorothy, "Come back tomorrow," she said, "You gotta keep your promise." She doesn't, she hear what I said, "Come back tomorrow." I gotta think about it. What is that called? Assent. A-S-S-E-N-T-E-N-T. Assent. They're petitioning permission for him to help her. They're looking for permission, but guess what? Moors don't need the permission of a de facto Roman law, de facto columnist who have conquered our land to give us permission to come back into our proper status of being Moors who run our own government. How do we know that? Let's go back to France versus United States of America. Remember, when we studied International Court of Justice, Reports of Judgments, Advisory Opinions and Orders, Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. In Morocco. In Morocco. United States of America is in Morocco. So in the judgment, what did we learn? So this is the summary of the judgment, right? Case Concerning Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. United States of America is in Morocco. Says who? The ICJ. The World Court. What did we learn when we read Articles Two and Three? Mother, could you read Article Two for me, please?
Note two unanimously, with regard to Consular Jurisdiction in the French Zone of Morocco. The United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteenth, eighteen thirty-six, that is to say, in all disputes, civil or criminal, between citizens or proteges of the United States. Three, by ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise Consular Jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges of the United States to the extent required by the provisions of the Act of Al-Jasiris relating to Consular Jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, Mother. So what happened in Articles, as remember, when we studied France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two? What did we learn? Let's go over this really quickly. The ICJ judges came out and said what? "With regard to Consular Jurisdiction in the French Zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteenth, eighteen thirty-six, that is to say, in all disputes, civil or criminal, between citizens and if so juror Moors subjects of the United States," that the United States could maintain jurisdiction. Why? Because they didn't call us Moors. We wasn't recognized as being Moors, because we hadn't come back to a Moors' government. We were still stateless Moors under protective status, so the United States of America had jurisdiction. Then in three, it says, "By ten votes to one, it is also entitled to exercise Consular Jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges, if so juror Moors subject, of the United States to the extent required by the provisions of the Act of Al-Jasiris relating to Consular Jurisdiction." So once again, they emphasize, the United States of America is to maintain jurisdiction over proteges, not Moors nationals. You gotta catch what they don't say. They're just telling you who the United States of America, not be confused, the United States has jurisdiction over. Protected parties, but not Moors nationals who are protected on their own Moors state, but here's where it gets interesting. If I have Mother read Article Four.
By six votes to five, but the other submissions of the United States relating to Consular Jurisdiction are rejected. It is not entitled to exercise Consular Jurisdiction in other cases in the French Zone of Morocco. Its rights in this connection, which were acquired solely by the effect of the Most Favored Nation Clause, came to an end with the termination by Great Britain of all its rights and privileges of a capitulatory character by the Franco-British Convention of nineteen thirty-seven.
So where they say in Article Four, the only way the United States, not be confused, the United States of America has jurisdiction? Because the Moors have not made a proper claim. So until then, the United States of America can hold on to what's called a limited privilege jurisdiction, even though Great Britain had already renounced their extraterritorial jurisdiction. their extraterritorial jurisdiction and that capitulation regime over Morocco. There are no more Christian powers claiming any type of jurisdiction in the Moroccan empire except for the United States of America and their municipal corporation called the United States. So in Article Four, they say right here, that consular jurisdiction is rejected. Articles Two and Three says they can maintain jurisdiction, but consular court is rejected, why? Because the ICJ threw out all the consular courts of France and the United States of America because they were tainted. They were de facto, and the United States of America is not Moroccans. So according to Article Twenty, you must have Moroccan law. Well, let's find out exactly what the ICJ says about Moroccan law. Article Five, Mother.
Unanimously, the United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the application of Moroccan laws, unless these laws had received its prior assent.
Stop. So in the Wizard of Oz, Oz tells Dorothy, after Dorothy thinks that she must now be in some assent agreement with Oz, she's telling Oz, hey, keep your promises, Oz telling her, ah, beat it, come back tomorrow. He didn't wanna keep his promises because he thinks that she needed to assent to him in order to move forward. Well, guess what? She never needed Oz's permission, as we learned at the end of the movie, she had to click her heels three times, she went home. Oz never sent her home. She went home because she came back into the consciousness of self. She claimed her own rights to go back home because she came back in self, she believed in herself. Why did she believe in herself all of a sudden? Because Oz wasn't around no more, she realized Oz couldn't help her. Who could help her? Herself. She had no one else, no false idol to think that that idol could help her. Soon as the Moors realized the Constitution for the United States of America, and there are several states, uh, uh, statutes can help them, when they realize international law, they Moors' states can help them, that's when they gonna realize, they gonna click them heels three times, they gonna go home, because they've been standing in Morocco the whole time because they're in Morocco, and the United States of America is in Morocco. And we never needed their permission through an assent because we're already home. Oz couldn't help Dorothy get home because she was already home. She just didn't know that, because she's looking around her surroundings, thinking she's outside her jurisdiction, she was in her jurisdiction the whole time. She just had to believe in who? Herself. Continue, Mother.
There is, however, no provision in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right, a right linked with the regime of capitulations, which can only exist as a corollary of consular jurisdiction. So that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, the assent of the United States is essential.
No, 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 go back.
See Two and...
Correct. See Two and Three above.
Two and Three above. The assent of the United States is essential. But subject to this, the contention of the United States is ill-founded. If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes.
Okay, what did we learn? Let's go back to the beginning. We're talking Wizard of Oz now. We're talking Moors and the United States of America. The United States of America is pretending to be the Wizard of Oz. Who was Dorothy? Following humanity, which is the matriarchs. And their sons. Who was standing behind Dorothy? Her sons. Including Toto, the dog. The dogma was pulled back, but let's get back to point. The United States had contended that its nationals were not subject in principle to the applications of Moroccan laws, unless these laws had received its prior assent, meaning permission. What does ICJ command say? There is, however, no provisions in any of the treaties conferring upon the United States such a right. To think that they got, that the Moors first have to petition the United States of America to get their own land rights back, to get back to their own motherland, there's no such thing in the treaties. A right linked with the regime of capitulations, which can only exist as a corollary of consular jurisdiction. So that if the cooperation of the United States Consular Courts is required to enforce a law, see Two and Three above, what's happening? Why they say go back to Two and Three? Because they're saying, go back to Two and Three, if the cooperation, who's the cooperation, who's the co-op? Who are the parties in the contract? Moors. If the Moors, the cooperating party, the co-party doesn't show up, you go back to Two and Three, United States of America, you get to maintain jurisdiction. Because the co-party failed to show up to make a claim. That's the Treaty of Madrid, Article Fifteen, Moors must come back and consent to Moroccan law. Until then, the United States gets to maintain jurisdiction, go back to See Two and Three, following yellow brick road for them. However, if Moors do come back, it says what? If the application of a law to citizens of the United States without its assent is contrary to international law, so therefore, the United States of America is saying, Moors need their permission? That's contrary to international law. What's the international law? The treaty. You look up the definition of treaty, Blackfall Dictionary, it says what? International law. Any dispute, any dispute, any dispute which may arise therefrom should be dealt with according to the ordinary methods for the settlement of international disputes. What does that mean? When Moors come back into international law, i.e. create their Moors' states, because that was a specific arrangement of Article Fifteen of Treaty of eighteen eighty in Madrid. When Moors come back into Moroccan government, consent to a Moroccan government or quit Moroccan government and continuously denaturalize, because you're following international law instructions. Once Moors follow international law instructions, immediately, we get to use consular court for what? Any disputes. So you have to understand, in the movie of Wizard of Oz, once Dorothy recognized Oz was an impostor, that Oz couldn't help her, she immediately started looking at the mirror herself to realize what she needed to do for self. You must understand, the United States of America does not have the responsibility of helping Moors to get their sovereignty. The Moors are responsible for their own sovereignty to come back to common law of jurisprudence, which is positive law of your Moors' states, to follow the yellow brick road of international law. So when you hear Tarshie Bay says, follow the yellow brick road, what's he saying? Keep following the yellow brick road, don't get off the yellow brick road and get distracted. Stay on the yellow brick road, what does the yellow brick road represent? Gold, the alchemical of gold. It represents the sun, what is the sun, that's you in, light, enlightenment. What happened when Dogma was pulled back, the curtain was pulled back, that created enlightenment. It shined a bright light on the fact that Oz was over here to the left, not in front of them. They were distracted with a cloud of smoke. Someone acting like government, but they wasn't public government. They were private government over to their left. They walked over there to the left and confronted that private municipal corporation acting like the wizard. And what was the wizard using? A pen, power of the pen, that microphone he had was his law. His words were giving demands. And what did Dorothy, the matriarch, finally tell him? Who are you? I don't believe you. You're a bad man. After she told him that, she went home, why? She believed in herself. She clicked her heels three times and went home. What does that symbolize to? Moors gotta get back to the Trinity, what's the Trinity? Government. 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 Because this is a circle. That's your circle seven. It's government. We have to get back to government. We all have to understand something. The United States of American colonists can't even go home. They can't go back to Great Britain. Remember, we looked up the word wizard cheaply, rich. They can't go back to Great Britain. They're now in Morocco. And the only way Moors are gonna come back to Morocco is in their heads, come back to common law. So we can learn a lot from Dorothy. Dorothy said, I wanna go home. And she did, which got fed up and realized that impostor couldn't help her. So I'll end with this. Moors must be disciplined and understand the answer to the test in order for us to get home, is in our heads and follow the yellow brick road back to our Moors' states that we used to have prior to fourteen ninety-two and follow international law. I end with that. Thank you. Smile.